Hello, I'm Jay Jermaine Bay with Alonian Morse Cranium, Antay Kalorata. The actor name is Ampak and the chief judge of counsel court. Today is Class 86, Class 86. What did we learn in Class 85? We're still going over the Charter of 1945, Chapter 6, right? And Chapter 6 is about the Pacific settlement of disputes, right? And what we're learning about the Pacific settlement of disputes is that there's certain boxes that the Moors and all other states on planet Earth have to check first, right? Whenever you have a so-called or alleged dispute, the first thing you must seek is mediation, right? From mediation, then you're getting into arbitration and then adjudication. Those are the basic steps, right? So what is the Moore should be doing at this time regarding when it deals with settlement disputes? Well, first thing we gotta do, we gotta figure out, okay, what is the dispute, right? Regarding contracts. And we're learning, when we look at contracts, we're learning law and history. So the first dispute that we should have had as Moors is, we didn't understand who the proper parties are in the contract. The first dispute we had was not necessarily with the colonists. The first dispute we had is, we did not recognize self. We didn't understand the proper party name in the contract, right? So even though we were writing writs and affidavits, every last one of those writs and affidavits that we wrote, and commonly known as the name of Moors American, was patently frivolous and arbitrary and capricious. We wasted a lot of time. Now, I get it, Moors are saying, well, it was a good exercise. Well, like they say, uh, practice makes perfect, right? But what type of practice? Perfect practice. You practice to try to seek what? Excellence. That way, when you get in the real game, you don't have to think about it no more. You just act, right? So if in fact, we were exercising, what is it that we were exercising? We were exercising misprism, right? We were exercising misknowers. We were exercising names that were not recognized in treaties. You see, your brain is a muscle. If you train your brain to use a linguistics such as Moors American, then you'll always think you're Moors American because that's what you've been taught. You've been indoctrinated to believe you're a particular part and it does not exist. So unfortunately, the Moors have established what's called a bad habit. And bad habits are hard to break. But what's the good news? The good news is, good habits are also hard to break. So we have to unlearn what we've learned and then learn new habits, good habits. And what's the first new habit we should understand is that we're not Americans. We are Moroccans. What type of Moroccans? Moors Moroccans, right? That's what we are. Our nationality is Moroccan and not Moors American. We are not Americans. Why is that important to understand, Moors? It's because as we start to enforce contracts, how will we ever go to enforce a contract in the name of Moors American if Moors American is not the party in the contract? But what is the party in the contract? What's the party name? Moroccan. Moors governments, but those Moors governments are based in Moroccan law for Moroccans because we're in Morocco. The people are named after the land and the land is named after the people. It's just that simple. There's no such thing as the Sultan of America. It does not exist. So, okay, Moors, we all have to get into good habits. And a part of those habits is understanding contract law. And that's what we'll continue to teach here at Ampak's study session. Contract law, it's as simple as that. Don't worry about the word treaty. Don't worry about the word constitution. Don't worry about the word convention. Don't worry about resolution. The first word you gotta understand is, everything is under a generic word called contract. That's it. Keep it that simple in your mind. Don't overthink it. It's simply a contract. And the parties must be known in the contract in order to enforce it. All right? So what we're learning, what we learned actually in Class 85 is that the Moors are starting to see law and history on how to use correlations on how to bring law and history to the forefront. How do we enforce our treaties? How do we enforce the Charter, right? How do we enforce our own Moroccan law? That is the question. When we have to now establish and organize dual society, we gotta come together and unite for all for one and one for all, right? We gotta teach each other good habits. We gotta come together and govern. Why do I say that? Because that's what the contract says. The reforms, the Moors have obligations according to contract. And we have to adhere to those obligations because that's what the contract says. All right? So let's go ahead and get to the class. As you know, we always open up the Constitution. The Constitution is paramount. The Constitution is a part of contract law. When you read the Act of the Sarahs in the preamble, it talks about the triple principle. And the first box in the triple principle is what? Sovereignty and independence. In order to have sovereignty and independence, it's called a constitution. Your sovereignty and independence is now transformed into a constitution. Your sovereignty is placed into the constitution. So therefore, the contract says, you have to have a constitution. That's what the Sultan said. So if the treaty is supreme law of the land, that means the Moors were not following the obligations of our own Moroccan law. So for those Moors who say, we don't need constitutions, okay, that sounds good, but documentation beats conversation every day of the week. Our treaties expressed the need for a constitution. The United Nations Charter expressed the need for a constitution, right? So we'll talk about that a little bit more today because constitutions are very important. It's the first box, right? Because right now, we're in Chapter 6 of the Charter of the United Nations. And Chapter 6 is about what? The Pacific settlement of disputes. How do you settle disputes? You settle them with contracts, right? So let's take a look at the board. Right now, we're in the Charter of the United Nations, Chapter 6. It's about the Pacific settlement disputes. Here's the question. How can Moroccans settle disputes? Answer: Enforce the strict sense of substantive contract law. However, the Moors have to be in conformity to our own Moroccan laws before we can petition a dispute. You see, more of the first dispute we have is with ourselves. We thought disputes with the colonists is really with us. We have to check our own boxes. So if we started getting the Charter, right? Let's go ahead and get into the Charter. We're talking about Chapter 6, Pacific settlement of disputes, right? And it's setting forth specific instructions. Keep in mind, the Charter of the United Nations is Moroccan law. So we gotta follow the instructions of Moroccan law because France commissioned and granted for the Charter to exist. They were writing law on behalf of the Sultan and on behalf of the Moors mob, the Moors government. So this is what the Moors are supposed to be doing, okay? So Chapter 6, about the Pacific settlement disputes. Article 33 says, the parties to any dispute. But wait. How can Moors start to now understand, how do we settle disputes according to international law? Well, the parties, right? That have a dispute, well, first of all, who are the parties? The parties are states, right? So in order to now try to enforce the Charter, only states can be a party to the Charter because the states do what? The states are recognized as persons in international law. But we, the people, the Moroccans, established the states, right? Then the state represents us and we represent the state. That's the duality, right? So the parties to any dispute, well, you can't say you have a dispute with the colonists unless you're a party. And what's the party? The states, right? So these are fundamentals, Moors. We gotta take a step backwards because we're talking about the Charter, the Charter of the contract. How do you enforce this contract? The only person that can enforce this contract is someone who has a state, right? Article 33. And everybody knows, when you're talking about basically Masonic secrets, right? The number 33, right? The very powerful number, right? When you're talking about Masons, Mason tree, right? Number one, the parties to any dispute, the continues to which it's likely to endanger the maintenance of international peace and security shall, first of all... So the parties to any dispute shall, first of all, seek a solution by negotiations, inquiry, mediation, conciliation, arbitration, and then last but not least, judicial settlement. Resort to regional agencies or arrangements or other peaceful means of their own choice. This is what state on state must do. You notice, and it say, go to war. It says, use diplomacy, right? Use diplomatic relations. That's the Vienna Convention on Diplomatic Relations of 1961 and its additional protocol. Then from there, you're using consul relations because consul relations gets towards arbitration. Now I'm talking about the Vienna Convention on Counsel Relations of 1963 and its additional protocol. And then last but not least, the additional protocol talks about now recognizing the ICJ, the International Court of Justice. That's what these instructions say for all states, right? But it does not say go to war. So under Article 33, which is the Genesis, the G, right? And Masons talk about the G. G for Genesis, the beginning. In the beginning. Well, in the beginning, you need what first? A state. In the beginning, 33 is the beginning, Genesis, Genesis, right? Geometry. What's the mathematical equation? To solve what? Your problem, your dispute. Well, what's the first thing you need in the mathematical equation? X times Y equals E. What's X? So only states can be a party to a treaty. Only states can be a party to the Charter. Even though the Charter does recognize other international organizations, but that's under what you call a special agreement. But the reality is, in order to become a member state, you have to have a state. Or you consider being non-member state. But you can't be stateless. There's no category for stateless people in the Charter. So under Article 33 and under Mason tree, 33, talks about geometry, the genesis, right? When you're talking about the Bible, what's it say in the Bible? In the beginning, Genesis. In the beginning, there was the word. And the word was with God. And the word was God, right? So in the beginning, there was the words. Here's the words, right? And the word was God. What does God stand for? It's an acronym for what? Government, Ordinance, Department. But you can't have no government or no ordinance or no department without what? A state. So what do the people do? They transform, transfer what? Their sovereignty of their words, their verbal expression. We're sovereigns. Okay, sounds good. Prove it. How do you prove it? Party. Party is a state. That's the genesis. That's the beginning. You go from an abstract to the manifestation of becoming a party, proper party, that's found in good and due form through a state. That's the genesis, Article 33. It's the beginning of what? This Charter started off talking about what? Human rights. That's Chapter 1. What was Chapter 2? It talked about what? The organs, right? Trying to now organize for the people trying to organize, right? Then it talked about membership. Then it went to the General Assembly. Now it went to Security Council. Now it's going into what? How to settle dispute once you've checked the applicable boxes that the people have to establish a state to let the state represent them. That's the genesis. Genesis starts with you and you transfer your sovereignty to a constitution. Then you become a party that's recognized. Now, once you have a state, now you can set up what? Arrangements. But it tells you right here, thou shall, thou shall, first of all, seek a solution by negotiation. What's the first negotiation? Your constitution. That's what negotiates for you, right? That's the proper written instrument. That's the documentation that beats conversation. Then you get into inquiry. Okay, how do you inquire? Well, whoever you got a dispute with, they need to have a constitution as well. Because you can only have a dispute with a state and the states' nationals of that state. So under inquiry, we're supposed to check to see if where we got a dispute with has a constitution. Then you'll get into mediation, conciliation, arbitration, and you settle it through judicial settlement. Resort to regional agencies or arrangements or other peaceful means of their own choice. So whatever two disputing states have a problem, they can settle it any way they want as long as it's peaceful. But first, we have to follow instructions as Moors. Listen to this. Article 36 says, "The Security Council may, at any stage of a dispute of the nature referred to an Article 33 or a situation of like nature, recommend appropriate procedures or methods of adjustment." So they're talking what? They're talking appropriate what? Procedures, right? Recommend appropriate procedures by procedures or methods of adjustment. Number 2, "The Security Council should take into consideration any procedure for the settlement of the dispute which have already been adopted by the parties." Let's underscore this real quick. That's something the Moors really need to see here. Number 2, "The Security Council should take into consideration any procedures for the settlement of the dispute which have already been adopted by the parties." So the parties, it requires at least two people to be parties, right? Talking plural, parties, two states. The United States of America, who's a party to the treaties. They're the first party, right? They're the negotiating state because they were there when the treaties were being written. Guess who was there? The United States of America and their ministers penitentiary, right? And who else was there? Morocco. And the office of Morocco was signing contracts on behalf of Morocco. So even though George Washington and the ministers penitentiary of 1789 are no longer here, their offices still remain. And so does the office of the Empire Morocco. So when you're looking at this settlement of dispute, the settlement of a dispute which have already been adopted by the parties, what did the parties already adopt?
Treaties.
Treaties. So that's the first thing the Security Council should be looking at is treaties, right? But isn't the first thing? No. What should be the first thing? Constitution. Let me explain. Before C. Muhammad accepted for the 13 colonies to have a treaty between themselves and the Sultan, what was the first thing they had to do? They had to enact the Constitution of 1781 that dissolved in 1788, right? The Confederation, right? Then they enacted another constitution called the United States of America, United States of America. In 1787, they ratified in 1788. They put it into full force in 1789. How did they come into full force? It's because George Washington had to do what? He submitted a copy to C. Muhammad. He deposited with C. Muhammad to show that the United States of America was in good and due form because they had a constitution. But before the 13 colonies could even talk treaty, enforcement of treaty, or the negotiation of a treaty, first they had to have what first? Constitution. So the Moors, all this time, have been trying to enforce our treaties and we've been trying to enforce their constitution of the United States of America for Americans. And the whole time, the Moroccan Moors was boy of a constitution. So we were in the absence of treaty provisions. What do I mean when I say the absence of treaty provision? The treaties say we needed a constitution because the treaty is Moroccan law and we gotta follow our own provisions of the treaties. I'll talk about that today. Let's get back over here. Article 33. So the Moors want to talk about a settlement of disputes. I'm talking to the Moors. First dispute we had was with who? Ourselves. We didn't realize it, but it was self-inflicted. We were creating a hardship on ourselves because we didn't understand the contract because someone decided not to share the Act of the Sarahs with the Moors. Our Moors leaders decided not to share the true concepts and explanation of the Treaty Madrid of 1880. Our Moors leaders decided not to talk about the Charter of the United Nations in all of its several resolutions. We were not taught international law. We were taught how to enforce the res judicata of the United States international organization. And United States international organizations, their revised statutes is listed under their internal municipal law. And when you go to the Black Law Dictionary, look up the definition of municipal law in the fourth edition, it says, "It's a contradistinction to international law." But the Moors have been running around trying to read, retain, and recite statutes of an international organization. We were trying to run around and enforce their constitution, but yet we were stateless ourselves because we didn't have a constitution. So before you can enforce a treaty or try to enforce some other state's constitution because you're claiming you got a dispute, well, the first thing you do, you have to check your own self. You gotta put yourself in check. When you play in a game of chess, the chess is played in like man. Their pieces for your pieces. You start off equal. You got a chessboard and chess pieces. Everybody's equal. That is the genesis of the game. That's the beginning. That's where you start. Each side is a mirror image of each other. And the Moors were not mirror imaging what other states had on planet Earth, which were constitutions. We were in the lack, the absence of our own Moroccan law. Okay, this is United Nations Security Council website, it's one of their pages. I was trying to show the Moors on that home right here. I'll enlarge it. Right here where it says home, right? About the Council, it says, "Practices, procedures, and working methods." So the Moors have to learn to have practice, procedures, and working methods of what? Contracts. You're practicing what? The strict sense of contracts, right? You're following procedure of what? Contracts. You're enforcing the methods of what? The repertoire of Security Council practice, which is case law. Go back and look at case law, but look at the end. Constitutional issues, right? So the Security Council's job is to look at your constitution. You're claiming you have a dispute and the Security Council says, uh, where's your constitution? What's the constitution about? Uh, it tells you the name of the parties in the constitution and the latitude, longitude, right? The domain, the territory, the frontier that you're claiming is your land, your permanent territory is in your constitution, right? All constitutional issues. So a constitutional issue is about actions with respect to threats to the peace, breaches of the peace, and acts of aggression towards what? Your state. You got a dispute, it's state on state dispute. It's about functions and powers of Security Council, other chapters of the Charter, Pacific settlement disputes, Chapter 6, purposes and principles of the United Nations, regional So when I start telling the Moors, right? I'm pausing right here for a reason, Moors. As we start to enforce the Charter and we have a Pacific settlement of disputes, right? Remember in Classes 84, 85, et cetera? I started going back to read France versus United States of America of 1952. Why is that? Because France was utilizing Chapter 6 of Pacific settlement dispute, which says, now you must bring your what? Your dispute to the International Court of Justice, right? So we're learning that about this already, right? So let's go ahead and read over Section 3, Article 36. "In making recommendations under this article, the Security Council should also take into consideration that legal disputes should, as a general rule, be referred by the parties to the International Court of Justice in accordance with the provisions of the statute of the Court." So you petition it to the Court, right? You don't go to war. You go to court. Bring your evidence, right? Bring your exhibits to court. Prove your case. Act like adults in the room. That's what the whole bottom line is. Or you're gonna act like a petulant child and go to war. You see, the intelligent people know they can use a pen and make a competent argument and win in the end with their proof, right? That's what the International Court of Justice is all about. But what did the Moors have in order to deal with their settlement of disputes? We were lacking our own treaty provisions. What do I mean? Okay, let's go to... I gotta back the Moors up just a little bit to remind you, Moors. Just listen to me, be patient with me. This right here, France versus United States of America, 1952, page 202, Moors are familiar with, right? Page 202. The first sentence says what in this particular paragraph?
"In the absence of any treaty provisions, dealing with this matter, it has been contended that a right of ascend can be based on custom, usage, and practice."
Okay, thank you. Pause. This is a note. The first sentence says, "In the absence of any treaty provisions, dealing with this matter..." Read again. "In the absence of any treaty provisions, dealing with this matter..." What matter? The matter of concert jurisdiction, right? The matter dealing with concert jurisdiction and the enforcement of what? Moroccan laws against who? The United States authorities and who else? The United States nationals. So the Moors were in the absence of treaty provisions dealing with the matter on how to enforce concert jurisdiction and enforcing Moroccan law against the United States authorities and the United States nationals. What were we in the absence of based upon the treaty provisions? We're in the absence of what? Constitutions. So if we were in the absence of a constitution, right? Ampak's Constitution, that's the cover page. You go back to the Pacific settlement of disputes, right? Which is Genesis. The Moors should be familiar with this. We're talking Pacific settlement dispute. What's the first dispute? Ourselves. Let's fix that first. So France granted the Charter. The Charter set up certain provisions. What type of provisions? Moroccan law. Moors have to abide by their own Moroccan law or we will be considered outlawed, right? So what does it say? Article 73, from... Casey, this is a note.
Article 73. "Members of the United Nations which have or assume responsibilities for the administration of territories whose people have not yet attained a full measure of self-government recognize the principle that the interests of the inhabitants of those territories are paramount and accept as a sacred trust the obligation to promote to the utmost within the system of international peace and security established by the present Charter the well-being of the inhabitants of those territories and to this end..."
Okay, now you come over to what? You come over to Section E. What does Section E say under Article 73? This is a note.
"...to transmit regularly to the Secretary General for information purposes subject to such limitation as security and constitutional considerations may require. Statistical and other information of a technical nature relating to economic, social, and educational conditions in the territories for which they are respectively responsible other than those territories to which Chapters 12 and 13 apply."
Alright, so. Under article seventy-three, section E. It talks about constitutional considerations. You see?
Yeah.
Now what is article seventy-three about? Article seventy-three is about indigenous people trying to get their what? Trying to get their self-governance. They wanna go from being non-self-governing to being self-governing territories. Well, how do you become a self-governing territory? What's based upon? Constitutional considerations. You see how they give you the answers to the test under article seventy-three of the Charter, which is Moroccan law? So under this charter, Moroccan law says what? You need constitutional consideration. Now let's go back to the Security Council. One of the obligations of the Security Council is to do what first? They said, oh, is a dispute going on about the Pacific settlement of disputes? Chapter six? Okay, you go back to it and it says home about the council. Practices and procedures and working methods. So what's the practice? What's the procedure? That establishes a working method. Well, the first practice should have been what? Constitutional principles. That said that the procedures of your constitution that outlines your frontier, your latitude longitude, your territory, and that's how you get into the working methods. Right? Cause it's all about what? The Security Council is responsible for looking into your constitutional issues. Of the Security Council to take it to the ICJ. Cause if you go back to the Charter of nineteen forty-five. Article seventy-three, section E talks about constitutional considerations may require. Before you can have a dispute, before you can become a self-governing territory, a self. See, I cut the non-off. Self-governing territory. You needed what? Constitutional considerations may require. And then the Security Council backs that up. Who's responsible for what? Police. What does police mean? Making sure the policies, codes, ordinances of law are being what? Upheld. Let's go to your treaties, Moors. Cause if we're gonna talk about the Charter. If the Charter talks about it, article thirty-three, right? Article thirty-three. Article thirty-three. I told you, we're gonna keep our thing on the pulse of this, Moors. And we wanna talk about disputes, cause Moors got a lot of disputes. I mean, a ton of disputes. They're talking about traffic tickets and it being evicted and child report and IRS. It's a bunch of disputes. Okay, Moors, how do you settle it? Well, they give you the answers to their task. Right? They say, well, how do you settle a dispute? Well, first you gotta do under Genesis, article thirty-three, you need to be a party. And what's a party? A state. Then the state comes in and represents you in dealing with that dispute with another jurisdiction of the state. Then they turn around and give you further answers to the test. Right? The Security Council is supposed to do what? Enforce what? Article thirty-six, section two, "Security Council should take into consideration any procedures for the settlement of the dispute which have already been adopted by the party." So we got a problem with United States of America. What is United States of America supposed to do? They supposed to go look back at what? What has already been adopted by who? The parties. And the Moors were not parties to our own treaties. Cause we were what? Absent. We were absent, Moors. We were absent of our own treaty. We were absent of our own treaty provisions dealing with this matter. What matter? Of disputes of concert jurisdiction. About how they force Moroccan laws against who? The United States authorities and who else? The United States nationals. You can't have a concert jurisdiction without a state. Cause you can't enforce counsel court without a state. Cause the state recognizes you as a national and the state recognizes the judge and that court in order to any Moroccan laws to be enforced. Why are we talking about this? Okay, cause we're going over a contract. What contract? Charter of United Nations nineteen forty-five is stipulations, procedures, methods of what? Moroccan law. So we have to be within the law, the bounds of the law. Or that's gonna make us outlawed. And article seventy-three talks about constitutional considerations. Constitution requirements. Right? And let's go back to your treaty. We're talking about how to settle disputes. The first dispute we had is with ourselves. This is the Treaty of Peace and Friendship. Eighteen thirty-six. Article twenty-four.
Article twenty-four. In any differences, if any differences shall arise by either party infringing on any of the articles of this treaty, peace and harmony shall remain notwithstanding in the fullest force until a friendly application shall be made for an arrangement. And until that application shall be rejected, no appeal shall be made to arms.
Pause. Thank you very much, Sister Noma. So this is a treaty. What type of treaty? Bilateral treaty between who? The Moroccan Empire and who? The United States of America, right? So if the treaty Supreme Law of the Lamb, then what does article twenty-four say? It says, "If any differences shall arise by either party infringing on any of the articles of this treaty, peace and harmony shall remain notwithstanding in the fullest force until a friendly application shall be made and arrangement. And until that application shall be rejected, no appeal shall be made to arms." So what is the first thing the Moors should understood? You gotta understand that the word party. The word party is now what? A state. So the Moors had what? Differences with the United States of America and the United States International Organization. So since we had differences. Then we had to make sure we were partying in order to enforce our own treaty provisions. Cause this is Moroccan law. Then it says what? We needed what? We needed a friendly application shall be made for an arrangement. What was the friendly applications the Moors were in absence of?
Constitution.
The Constitution. That's the friendly application. That sets up the arrangements, which is the negotiations. Let's go back to the Charter. You see right here? The parties to any dispute. Shall first of all. Set up what? Seek a solution by negotiations. What solution did the Moors need? Constitution. That sets up the negotiations and the inquiry, cause you can go back and check the record. Which sets up the mediation, because the documentation beats conversation every day of the week. Which sets up conciliation, arbitration, then judicial settlement, but all of that is about what? Arrangements. That's in your Charter. I mean, your treaty, Moors. It sets up what? We must set up what? Friendly application shall be made. This is Treaty of Peace and Friendship, eighteen thirty-six, article twenty-four. A friendly application shall be made for an arrangement. And until that application shall be rejected. So guess who gotta try to reject our friendly application? United States of America. Well, they can't do it. They know they can't do it. Why? Cause they can't have no political interest or question about anything that happens in Morocco. That's their foreign policy. They can't question what happens with Morocco. Why? Because they're privileged. They have a privileged status in Morocco. They're tenants with a lease agreement called a treaty. Why else can they? Why else can't they make any type of question to challenge Moors? It's because they have certainly changed themselves into a corporation. Under article one oh five of the Act of Al-Dusers, they can't do anything, nothing to abridge the rights of the public services of the Moroccan state government. The public service is what? Our three brothers' government. That's the state. And they can't do anything to infringe upon the rights of our rights under triple principle. Or if that would be seen as what? Them trying to alienate us for their private interest. Their advantages of their own private interest. Right? So they can't do anything according to their own foreign policy. Cause that would be a violation of the treaty. So according to our own treaties. We had to have a friendly application that sets up the arrangement. And until that application shall be rejected, no appeal shall be made to arms. That's why article thirty-three of the Charter doesn't talk about arms. It's about friendly applications and arrangements. But you need to be a party first. In order for you to have a real dispute, the first dispute started with you. Have you checked your own boxes? Let's continue. So you go from article twenty-four, I'm gonna work my way backwards. Watch this. Article twenty-four, Treaty of Peace and Friendship, cause Moors been studying the bilateral Treaty of Peace and Friendship for decades. Just this one treaty, just this one, much less the Act of Al-Dusers or the Treaty of Madrid, but they've been studying this one treaty for decades. But what happened? We were never taught about international law. And we would have understood international law, we would start understanding our own treaties. So we were in the absence of treaty provisions. Cause guess what? The Charter of International Law, that Charter was established from our own treaties. Right? It is extended language of our treaties. And we wasn't studying our own treaties. We wasn't studying international law. And what is international law? Moroccan law. It's Moors law. Somebody had us reading half the book and trying to come up with a summary. The other half wasn't told. Okay, so you go from article twenty-four up to article twenty-two. "If an American citizen shall die in our country and no will shall appear, the consul shall take possession of his effects. And if there shall be no consul, the effect shall be deposited in the hands of some person worthy of trust until the party shall appear who has a right to demand them." Who's the party? Who has a right? Listen, "until the party shall appear who has a right to demand them." So who's the party? The Moors states have to be the proper party, the trusted party to make a proper demand, right? "But if the heir to the person deceased be present, the property shall be delivered to him without interruption. And if a will shall appear, the property shall be sent agreeably to that will as soon as the consul shall declare the validity thereof." So the will is what? Our treaties. What else is the will? Our constitution. That outlines the provincial state government within the expansive, vast territory of the Moroccan empire. So only the consul, "The consul shall declare the validity thereof." So what happened? If the consul's making validity, that means an order is coming from the consul court. The consul court has to say, yes. This Moroccan state does exist and yes. The three brothers' governments shall be respected. Yes. The Moroccan nationals are the people of the land. Our hereditatives. We make a proper claim. We become appropriate persona, suit juris, because the consul court validates the territory as well as the jurisdiction. The word jurisdiction is based in civil and criminal courts. Territory is the state claiming the land. Jurisdiction is about civil and criminal disputes and who has the criminal and civil dispute. Jurisdiction, that's Moors. Let's read it again from the top. So we started it, article twenty-four. We needed a constitution. That's the friendly application. Now we're going up now to article twenty-two. Now that represents what? "If an American citizen shall die in our country and no will shall appear, the consul shall take possession of his effects. And if there shall be no consul, the effect shall be deposited in the hands of some person worthy of trust." So the United States of America, our, our property, right? All of our property was handed to the United States of America because they extuded and hypothesized our land and our nationality through the Fourteenth Amendment. Right? So the United States of America adopted the Moors and omitted, right? Through an omission, they omitted, under article three, section two, clause one of their constitution, they omitted the word subject. Crossed it out and now there's only citizens. They made the Moors Americans, right? They turned the Moors from being Moors subjects into simply being Americans, citizens. That way what? The United States of America and the United States could have civil and criminal jurisdiction over the Moors. By calling them Americans. They adopted us. Through legislation with a pen. They used the power of the pen. Right? So they was holding on to the trust as trustees. Under a protectorate status. They became the protectorates status. Right? They were protecting us and in reality, we were supposed to be protecting them under our treaties and under our Moroccan government. But they usurped us. And now our property, including ourselves as human beings, we became property as well of theirs because they adopted us as property. We were the redhead stepchild. They brought us into their family, but yet we didn't have their consanguinity, cause we were Moroccans and they were Americans. They adopted us nonetheless. But as soon as the redhead stepchild realized exactly who they are, and they wanna go back to their original family, what do they need to do? They gotta go make a proper claim back to their family. The family gotta recognize you as the child. And how does the, the, the family recognize you as one of their own children as Moroccan? The state does that. The state becomes the parent. Right? The constitution is the parent that recognizes you as one of their own and brings you back and recognizes you as being Moroccan. And then the courts finalize it. All the Moors know about going to family court and, and you playing child support court and divorce court. Who are you dealing with? You're dealing with judges. What makes you think judges don't have something to do with this? Of recognizing you. See, the state depends on the judges to know the law. So the judges, I would give you, now recognize that child, that Moroccan child all over again. Say, yeah, come on back home. You were adopted. You were naturalized. Now it's time for you to come back home and the state will recognize you. But without a state, there is no judge. Listen. Article twenty-two, "If an American citizen shall die in our country and no will shall appear, the consul shall take possession of his effects. And if there shall be no consul, the effect shall be deposited in the hands of some person worthy of trust." We didn't have no consul no more. Why did we have a consul? Cause we didn't have a state. We didn't have no more government. They usurped our governments. Go ahead, brother.
Just one question.
Sure, go for it.
Back then, did we have a constitution?
No. So constitutions, according to empires, they were just claiming land. Moors were technically claiming lands all over planet Earth. Right? Because we were the original people. We're just spread out to different tribes, right? We're one human family. So this being constitution had to come in. That way you make a legitimate land claim, right? It's a parcel of land you're claiming. Like if you own your house. At the closing table, they gave you a packet. And a part of that packet had a land survey that outlined that little one acre that your house is sitting on. That makes a distinction based upon the deed you have. Right? A constitution is nothing but a deed. You see? But it must outline the latitude longitude of that parcel of land. So the state is just one big giant parcel of land. Broke down into acres of land, you see? So no, back then, the empire didn't have a constitution. But you gotta remember. When the Moors created law, the Sultan created law, cause the Sultan said in the Treaty of Madrid eighteen eighty. Article seven, he said what? He said the states belonged to the Sultan. Right? So when he said the states belonged to the Sultan. At that time, the Sultan didn't have a constitution. He was just making claims all over the land. The Moroccan empire, right? But, but according to the treaties, when the Sultan in nineteen oh six and after the Act of Al-Dusers, he put provisions in there under chapter seven that talked about everybody had to have constitutional laws. he put provisions in there under chapter seven that talked about everybody had to have constitutional laws. So he started setting forth new Moroccan law that was also applicable to him. Right? Nineteen oh six. So when the Sultan of Morocco, Mohammed the Fifth stepped down in nineteen fifty-six, when he stepped down from being Sultan and now he demoted himself to being king, what did he do after nineteen fifty-six? He enacted a constitution in nineteen sixty-two. So once he did that, representing Moroccans, right? Even though they'll tell you their constitution basically that they're Arabs, right? It's in a protectorate status that's protecting the indigenous people of the land that they call their Maasai people. As soon as the king enacted a constitution in nineteen sixty-two, guess what? That meant all the Moors had to do the same thing because now it set forth precedents. When France had the pen, France said everybody had to have a what? Constitution. That became a reform. France set forth these reforms. The Act of the Obeseras of nineteen oh six set forth reforms. Under chapter seven of the Act of the Obeseras set forth reforms through your constitution. So the word constitution became basically a customary norm of international law. And then the Sultan turned king in nineteen fifty-six and that's a constitution nineteen sixty-two. Guess what that did? That created what? Customary norms of international law. For who? Moroccans. So the Moors had no choice but to enact constitutions after the year nineteen oh six. Because chapter seven of the Act of the Obeseras of nineteen oh six talked about constitutional reforms. However, they find you in good and new form where they were looking at constitutions. The United States of America had a constitution since the late seventeen hundreds. So you have to understand how this word constitution came to be. Moroccan law was recognizing constitutions. A constitution is nothing but a deed that makes claim to a large swath of land for its permanent population and its government. So the word state basically transformed, right? It came to be, it went from what being tribes, right? From tribe, it, it elevated, transformed into the word state. So the word state comes from the word east state, a state. You see? You should understand the word state, we have no choice but to abide by it because it's in our own treaties. Now it doesn't say the word state in the bilateral treaty of peace and friendship. It starts to get more into the word state to recognize the word state. Started getting into the Treaty of Madrid eighteen-eight. In the Treaty of Madrid eighteen-eight, Article seven talks about the Sultan owns the states. So he's recognizing this word state. The Act of the Obeseras then gets into it, what? The triple principle of sovereignty and independence was a political, political status of a state. So it was the empire state. But there's no constitution that represents the empire state. But there are constitutions that represent provincial state governments within the empire. And this is why the Moors were established, was called the United States of Morocco that will represent the empire. Because the United States of Morocco is interdependent states and all of those, each one of those states is not, their constitution, nothing but a deed that claims a particular small portion of the empire. That must be understood. Okay, let's get back at it. Good question, brother. Okay, so, let's get back at it. So if the consul, right, if the consul shall declare the validity thereof, the validity of what? The fact that you've become what? A party, right? That you are the competent authority, you according to the will have made a claim back to your own land. And your state recognizes you and you recognize the state, it's a duality. Cause the pen can't move itself. It, it's, it's an instrument. Right? The pen itself is an arm. This is an arm. You know why they call things arms? Because it's an extension of your arm. That's why it's called an arm. It's an extension of your arm. Your arm is the first weapon. It is the first tool you've ever had in your life. And then you can place in your hand tools, right? So anything you put in your hand is the extension of your arm. So this is the arm. Now you armed yourself with a pen. Cause this can't move by itself. A sword can't move by itself. A sword cannot unsheathe. A sword cannot unsheathe itself. Only a human being can pull that sword out and unsheathe it. And here's your sword. It's your arm. It's the pen of diplomacy. And with this pen, you gotta recognize yourself through that constitution. And then you, after that, recognize the constitution itself by you being a human being controlling the pen. Cause it needs you to bring it to life. The words are just pressed against paper. But how do you bring the words into fruition? How do you make the words organic? Well, it needs you, the human being. So it's a duality. You're working together, right? Okay. So okay, if the consul court has to declare the validity, that means now you're moving up to what? Articles twenty and twenty-one. Right? So it says, Article twenty. "If any citizens of the United States or any persons under their protection should have any dispute with each other, the consul shall decide between the parties. And whenever the consul shall require any aid or assistance from our government to enforce its decisions, it shall be immediately granted to him." So who is now making decisions based upon dispute? The consul court. You see, Moors kept going to Articles twenty and twenty-one first for decades. Are we the council, we get to enforce this in these writs and affidavits? No, you, you did it out of sequential order. You cannot enforce consul court until you have a friendly application that set up the arrangement, which was the constitution. And then through the constitution, it recognized a judicial branch. And that judicial branch could now enforce what? Consul court. And then consul court could come under Article twenty-two and make a sovereign claim to the land, to the court, the judge responsible for doubt, validating the constitution. Then after it validates the constitution, then the constitution and its courts can now enforce consul court, both civil and criminal or criminal and civil, because the ICJ says Articles twenty and twenty-one, there's no distinction between civil and criminal. They're both combined. A lot of Moors think that this is civil and this is criminal. No, there's no distinction. It represents both civil and criminal jurisdiction of the court. And this is the order that the Moors should have taken based upon what? Let's go back to it. Let's keep it dramatic. You say you got a settlement of dispute? Okay, then are you a party? Cause since you say you got a dispute, are you a party? Right? Because it's Genesis, Article thirty-three. Geometry, the G. Right? Geometry, the, the G, right? So in order to now get peace, you gotta understand how the arrangements work out. And what's the first thing of peace? Treaty of Peace and Friendship. That's the peace. Go back to it. You gotta go back to your treaties, Moors. Treat the supreme order of land. And Moors could not enforce Articles twenty and twenty-one until they understood Article twenty-four about the friendly arrangement of the constitution that then allowed you to go back through Article twenty-two to say, hey, the consul court recognizes the constitution of the state and its three branches of government. Then you can start laying down the law. Now you're no longer what? Let's go back to it. Now you're no longer what? In the absence of any treaty provisions, dealing with this matter. Now you can do what? Okay, you can enforce consul jurisdiction according to international court of justice and your treaties. To do what? Enforce what? Moroccan laws against who? The United States authorities and who else? The United States nationals. However, the Moors were in absence of treaty provisions. Why do I say that? Okay. Now you go to the Act of the Obeseras of nineteen oh six. Chapter seven. This is Moroccan law that Moors had to enforce upon themselves first before there could be a dispute. Because only treat, states can be a party to a dispute. Chapter seven, general provisions, right? Instructions. Article one twenty with a view to harmonizing its legislation. "If the occasion arises with the engagements contracted under the present general act, each of the signatory powers engages to take the necessary steps leading to the enactment of such legislation as may be necessary to far, so far as it concerned." So Moors had to take what? The necessary steps leading to the enactment of such legislation. What's the first legislation we needed? A state constitution. That's the first legislative act. As may be necessary, it's necessary to have a constitution. So far as it is concerned. So the Moors had concerns. They had disputes. So we needed to take the necessary steps leading to the enactment of such legislation of a constitution as may be necessary so far as it is concerned. That was an obligation of Moors. If we think we got disputes, you gotta go back to what? Genesis. The beginning starts with a constitution. It's paramount. What does paramount mean? Primary, first. Article one twenty-one of chapter seven of the Act of the Obeseras. "The present general act shall be ratified according to the constitutional laws of each state." These are instructions. The Charter was established in nineteen forty-five. This treaty came out in nineteen oh six. So which came first? The chicken or the egg? Right? You know what the answer is? They're both female. So what's the question? Right? The chicken can only lay eggs if it's what? Female. The egg is what? Female itself. Came from the female. The egg represents what? Ovaries, right? The eggs. Which came first, the chicken or the egg? Well, they're both female. Cause the woman carries the eggs. Right? So the treaty came first, but then there's a charter, but they're both what? Part and parcel to each other. Cause it's what? Law and history. They are all related to each other. All contracts, all laws of what? Matriarchal in character. All law. All law Allah. All law Allah. Female, mother's law, nature's law, contracts are about mother's law. Okay, Article one twenty-one, "The present general act shall be ratified according to the constitutional laws of each state." So you can't even ratify a treaty unless you have a constitution laws first. Genesis, the number thirty-three, right? So the number thirty-three of the what? Charter of United Nations, Article thirty-three, let's go back to it. Genesis. The letter G, right? Masons used the thirty-three, right? The parties to any dispute shall first of all, set up arrangements. And the first arrangement you need is to be a party, to be the genesis state. Let's go back to it. So another way for you to ratify any laws, you need a three branches of government. So which means you needed the, the, the mothers to ratify, cause the mothers create the law. Then the wazir comes in and ratifies it and signs it into law. So the present general act shall be ratified. It has no choice but, it says shall be ratified. You can't enforce the contract unless it's been ratified. These are instructions, Moroccan law. So who was the first dispute with? How do we settle a dispute? Well, the first dispute you gotta settle with is yourself. You gotta understand contract. "The present general act shall be ratified according to the constitutional laws of each state. The ratification shall be deposited at Madrid as soon as practicable." Now Madrid is where now?
New York.
New York, right? That's the new United Nations headquarters according, according to Article one oh two of the Charter. Which is Moroccan law. These are Moroccan law instructions. The Charter is Moroccan law instructions. They're all related to each other. Law is law because it's all made by who? Matriarchs. The pen is the pen is matriarchal in character. Start here. "The ratification shall be deposited." Have Moors been deposited ratifications? No. So the first dispute we had with who? Self. We were following instructions. "The ratification shall be deposited at Madrid as soon as practicable and at the latest by December thirty-first, one thousand nine hundred and six," right? That was just some instructions. "A process verbal shall be made of such deposit and a certified copy sent to each of the signatory powers" through the diplomatic channels. So if we didn't have a constitution, how could we ratify the law? And if we didn't have a constitution and then ratified Moroccan law, that mean we couldn't enforce it. Which mean we could not send writs and affidavits to nobody. Cause your writs and affidavits can only go, can be only written by who? The competent authority of the state. Treaties are not self-executing. Only the competent authority of the state can do that. Listen, Article one twenty-two. "The present general act shall enter its effect as soon as all the ratifications shall have been deposited." You can't use unless you deposit it. Another way to deposit this particular treaty is to what? It had to be ratified first. Only way for it to be ratified, you have to have a government that ratified it. In order to have a government, you need a state. In order for that state to not be validated, you need a consul court to validate the state that made a land claim through a deed commonly known as a constitution. "In case of special legislative measures which may be necessary in certain countries to ensure the application of their nationals living in Morocco or certain stipulations of the present act shall not have been enacted by the date fixed for ratification, these stipulations shall only become applicable in respect to them after the legislative measures above referred to shall have been promulgated." These are instructions. Listen to what it just said. It said you can't enforce the treaties. Let's read it again. "You can't enforce the treaties unless you have ratified your deposit. In case the special legislative measures which have been necessary, the necessary steps, necessary in certain countries to ensure the application to their nationals living in Morocco of certain stipulations of this present general act shall not have been enacted by the date fixed." So if you haven't enacted it, have you, if you haven't enacted the act, the general act, right? By the date fixed for ratification. So if you haven't ratified the act, then these stipulations, the act, shall only become applicable in respect to them after, after, after the legislative measures above referred to shall have been promulgated. So you gotta ratify, deposit, then promulgate. These are instructions. What type of instructions? Moroccan instructions. For who? Moroccans and any other signatory power. Cause it sets up what? The arrangements. A treaty means what? How you treat. It's your relations. It's a friendly application that satisfies any dispute. See, the first settlement of dispute is the treaty itself. The treaty has already settled certain disputes. So what dispute the Moors have, we gotta dispute with the cons about what? We said this is our land. Okay, how do you prove this is your land? Well, you need to enforce the treaty. Well, how do you enforce treaties? Well, first you have to do what? You need a legislative measure, right? Deposit and promulgation, but you can't do what? You can't ratify, deposit, and promulgate unless you have a government. You can't have a government unless you got a state. You can't have a state without a constitution and that constitution has to be validated by the council court. So therefore, the original dispute. Was with ourselves, because we didn't follow instructions. Cause we didn't know these instructions existed. Now, once you follow the instructions, Moors, listen to me. Once you follow the instructions. The council court has validated your constitution. You ratified, deposited and promulgated your constitution in accordance to international law, cause you gotta give it to who? The secretary under article one oh two of the charter. Those are instructions. Then you would see and become a party to the treaties, who becomes a party to the treaties? The Moroccan state that was validated by the council court. According to the treaty provisions of the bilateral treaty. Under what, article twenty-two says the council court has to validate the fact that your demand of your property back, what was the first property? You as a Moor had to come back first. You were the first property. Then you made a, a, a claim to the land. In the Treaty of Montevideo of nineteen thirty-three. Nineteen thirty-three. Right? That's Mason talk. Thirty-three. Article one said, article one said what, in a state is recognized as a person in international law. Then it set up four provisions, four provisions. It said what, the first you needed what, a permanent population. Then a permanent territory, then a government and then ability to get into relations with other states, so what you need first, you needed a state. Then you needed the people. But the people recognize the state, cause it can be no state without a pen and acting a constitution, so it's a duality, the state and the people go hand in hand. So in the article one of the, of the Treaty of Montevideo of nineteen thirty-three. Says permanent population, so the population, the people in that, the constitution. To make a deed, a claim to the deed. The deed of the land, the alodio land, alodio people make a claim to the lodium, alodium land, which is the estate. Once you follow the instructions, Moors, right, let's get back to the board. How can Moroccan settle disputes? Answer, enforce the strict sense of substantive contract law. However, the Moors have to be in conformity to our own Moroccan laws before we can petition a dispute. So okay, now, once we check the box and we become competent Moors. Cause we have a competent state. That now is in good and due form, cause it's been validated by the council court. And we've checked the boxes in accordance to international law, which is Moroccan law. We were ceded to treaties and now we enforcing the treaties and now your council court can now say we are party to said treaties. And how do you do that, okay, here's the council court order that AIPAC put out on March fifteenth, twenty twenty-two. AIPAC followed instructions. So are other Moorish states. Shout out to the other Moorish states. They're now following the strict sense of the law, which is contract law, what type of law, Moroccan law, listen. So look at the seal, what does the seal represent, Moors? Is the fingerprint, it's the thumbprint, it's the mother's thumbprint. The mother's giving permission that says the person, the state is a person in international law, it's the thumbprint, the seal is the thumbprint of the mother. She's giving permission. Okay, that's why I said the seal. Okay? So what's the name of the state, Alodion Morris Pradium Anti Colorado, Council Court of the State, okay, Council Court of the State, capital S. Right, a provincial state government under the existing and pre-existing sovereignty of the Moroccan empire. This case was by what, case concerning treaty rights of Moorish nationals in Morocco. So now we're gonna enforce the treaties, why, supreme of the land, but the only way to enforce a treaty, first you have to have a constitutional state, so that state can become a party to what? The treaty. So you can enforce your treaty. Rights, where? In Morocco. For who? Moorish nationals, i.e. Moroccans. Right, let's get into it. So this case is Alodion Morris Pradium Anti Colorado against United States of America, United States and the state of Colorado, right, it's in order. Not a judgment. It's in order. Not a judgment. Of March fifteenth, twenty twenty-two, right? Alright, so line number nineteen, let's read a few paragraphs so the Moors can understand this word constitution. It is paramount, what does paramount mean, it's primary, right? Under article thirty-three of what, the charter of, of United Nations, article thirty-three talks about what, it's Genesis thirty-three, right? Okay, mother.
Um, regarding one, enforcement of Moorish constitutions, independent state sovereignty, human rights, birth rights and the restoration of political jurisdiction. Of Moorish nationals in the empire of Morocco. Effect, the triple principle of sovereignty and independence, integrity of domains, economic liberty without any inequality. As corollary to the general act of Al-Jasiris of nineteen oh six. Effect, paramount acceleration of political, economic and social development. As corollary to the charter of the United Nations, chapter eleven. Effect, the choice to choose the entire submission of the laws of the empire. And the rejection of capitulation, regime, protege and subject status. As corollary to the Treaty of Madrid of eighteen eighty.
Pause, okay, so what did we start off with, Moors, what did your council court, first thing your council court does first, right? It says what, it's about treaty rights, but first thing it says enforcement of what, Moorish constitutions. That's paramount, that's primary. That sets up the friendly arrangements. That's the negotiations. This is the arbitration, right, arbitration is when you're dealing with facts, material facts, not your verbal commands. You're putting a pen to it now, with exhibits. Right, so one of your attachments of exhibits is what, your constitution, your flag, your seal, your declaration of independence. Is backed up by what, the constitution. And the council court now is validating according to article twenty-two of the Treaty of Peace and Friendship, it's validating that you have a constitution. Which sets up what, your independent state sovereignty. Section two.
Section two. Enforcement of competent Moorish government legislation and council court ministerial decrees. Effect, scope of Moroccan law in council court venues as being the supreme law of the land. And natural corollary to the Treaty of Peace and Friendship seventeen eighty-seven and eighteen thirty-six. And the Act of Al-Jasiris of nineteen oh six.
Pause, okay, so section two. The enforcement of competent Moorish government legislation and council court ministerial decrees. Right, what about the ministerial decrees, okay, what did the ICJ say? ICJ said you needed what, ministerial decrees binding upon the council court. You see that, ministerial decrees were binding upon council court, it's a council court's obligation. To enforce the laws on behalf of Moroccans, but you couldn't have council court without a state. And the, the council court had to recognize the state. Okay, let's get back at it. So the enforcement of competent, competent, competent Moorish government legislation and council court ministerial decrees. And what's the effect of having a competent Moorish government legislation and council court ministerial decrees, well, the effect is. A scope of Moroccan law and council court venues as being the supreme law of the land. And a natural corollary to the Treaty of Peace and Friendship seventeen eighty-seven, eighteen thirty-six and the Act of Al-Jasiris nineteen oh six. Right, you're going immediately to enforce treaties and constitutions, you're talking constitution first, then the treaty, you cannot enforce treaties without the constitution first, it's paramount. Section three.
Section three, prior American assent as ill-founded. As the citizens of the United States of America are subject in principle to the application of Moroccan law. Effect, the substantive decision by the International Court of Justice, ICJ, case regarding France versus the United States of America in nineteen fifty-two. Is authoritative and final as corollary to customary international law.
Okay, so France versus United States of America nineteen fifty-two, she become case law for the chief Kazee, the chief judge of the Moorish state. So the Moorish government, its chief judge now has to use France versus United States of America and add that to your case law. Right, and say now, your council court recognizes that case as being read through the Congress, as being precedent, right? Well-served principles of international law. Right, cause your council court is acting as the international law venue. It must recognize international law. Section four.
Section four, ratification by Moorish governments to protect any subject of Morocco that have been naturalized as Fourteenth Amendment persons. Effect, ratified state legislation of Moroccan law protects the civil and criminal judicial rights of indigenous Moors branded as subjects. Proteges and persons as a natural corollary to the United Nations Charter of Moroccan Law.
And Moroccan law.
And Moroccan law.
Yep, so you're using the combination, Moors, of what? United Nations Charter and Moroccan law, what are you doing, now you're starting to flank. You're flanking the United States of America. You're flanking the United States International Organization and you're flanking all of their so-called several union states, you're flanking them with what? You're flanking them with this contract of the charter that the United States of America signed that contract. What other contracts have they signed, they signed all the treaties. But the reality is the charter is Moroccan law. Everything's Moroccan law that the United States of America has signed on as a contracting party or negotiating party. They have signed onto a bunch of Moroccan law contracts. And we're enforcing it now, you see? But what we're doing here is section four, Moors, ratifications, you know what ratification, then we learned in the Act of Al-Jasiris? Right, chapter seven, ratification by Moorish governments to protect any subject of Morocco. That have been naturalized as Fourteenth Amendment persons. Effect, ratified state legislation, ratified state legislation, ratified state legislation of Moroccan law protects. The civil and criminal judicial, uh, judicial rights of indigenous Moors branded as subjects. Proteges and persons as a natural corollary to the United Nations Charter and Moroccan law, you see what you're doing? So first, we enforce what, constitution, then we went into treaties and now we're smacking them with what? We hit them with the international law, the United, uh, United Nations ICJ and now we hitting, hitting them with the charter, you see what I'm doing? As I'm writing. I'm hitting them with nothing but contracts, this is contract law. I'm enforcing the contracts that they've already signed. But the Moors were not parties to these contracts. We could not enforce it, A, because we were calling ourselves Moorish Americans, which is a misnomer and fraud. And two, because we wasn't a party, cause we have a state, so we couldn't enforce Moroccan law. Section five.
Section five, ratified Moroccan law for the responsibility of international organizations in Morocco. Effect, in an enactment of Moorish legislation to prosecute the United States for international Morocco acts. As corollary to the Treaty of Peace and Friendship of eighteen thirty-six, articles twenty, twenty-one and twenty-four. And the Act of Al-Jasiris, articles one oh one, one oh two, one twenty and one twenty-three, inter alia.
Alright, so, section five, now that we set up the enforcement of constitution, then treaties, then enforcement of, of, of international law, which is the ICJ reports. Then we started talking about the charter, right, now we're going right back to the treaties and we're talking about now Moorish legislation. Moorish legislation, right, cause we needed legislation in addition to the treaties, right? Now we're enforcing international law according to the Act of Al-Jasiris and according to the Treaty of Peace and Friendship. Right, so we're now setting forth certain articles, right? So what does article one oh one and one oh two say, okay, let's go to the charter, I mean the Act of Al-Jasiris, real quick. Okay?
Article one oh one, the Moorish Customs Authority shall directly inform. The diplomatic or consul agents of any violations of this regulation. Which may have been committed by those under their jurisdiction in order that they may be prosecuted before the competent court.
Mm-hmm, continue.
Similar violations by Moorish subjects shall be brought directly by the customs before the Sharifian authority.
Alright, so article one oh one talks about the enforcement against any foreigners as well as Moorish subjects, okay, but here's the kicker, article one oh two.
Article one oh two, every confiscation, fine or penalty must be imposed on foreigners by concert jurisdiction. And on more, Moorish subjects by Sharifian jurisdiction.
So we're supposed to, this is a treaty, these are obligations, it says every confiscation, fine or penalty must. Be imposed on foreigners by council jurisdiction. And on Moorish subjects by the Sharifian jurisdiction, so it's that we have to do it, it's an obligation. If they found in violation of our Moroccan law, then we must prosecute. Right? But you can't prosecute, cause you don't have a state. Which means you don't have a dispute, cause if you're not enforcing the contract, you can't find your name in the contract. If you can't enforce the contract, that means there's no contest, no contract, no contest, no contract, no contest. No contract, no contest, and the only way to enforce the contract, you have to identify your name in the contract. And be a party to that contract through a state. Go back to council court order.
Six, the COTI and the creation of taxes, revenue and validity of deeds by Moorish governments. Effect, the enforcement of public services, public works and satisfaction of deeds inter alia by Moorish governments. As corollary to Moorish treaties and inter, internal state legislation.
Mm-hmm, continue.
Seven, circle seven, the federal question about the future of the colonial fifty privileged chartered colonies, so-called states. In Morocco and the pending renewal of the paramount emanating document known as the bilateral Treaty of Peace and Friendship. Eighteen thirty-six, article twenty-five. Effect, a critical moment in history regarding the House of Representatives and the Senate of the United States of August third nineteen oh six. Referencing a letter from the Secretary of State submitting a report on the subject of citizenship. Expatriation and protections abroad of December twentieth of nineteen oh six, page four fifty-nine through four sixty, Morocco. In effect, a natural corollary for competent Moors to enforce the formality, instructions of statehood. And nationalisms pursuant to ratified, deposited and promulgated Moorish state constitutions. Via the Treaty of Peace and Friendship of seventeen eighty-seven and eighteen thirty-six, articles twenty, twenty-one and twenty-two. The Treaty of Madrid eighteen eighty, article fifteen, paragraph one. The Act of Al-Jasiris nineteen oh six, articles one twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two and twenty-three. The Montevideo Convention on the Rights of and Duties of States nineteen thirty-three, articles one three seven and eleven. Regime of capitulations and the depository pursuant to the United Nations Charter, articles one B. Fifty-five, seventy-three, seventy-five and one oh two, inter alia. Effect, reiteration of Mr. Hoffman Philip charges, the affairs to Mr. Ilahu Root. Secretary of State regarding protections in Morocco regarding the multilateral Treaty of Madrid, article fifteen, clause one. The above ruling has never yet been acted upon and should this at any time be contemplated seriously. A large number of naturalized people, American and others residing in Morocco would be affected thereby. Effect, the united, effect, the overdue times have come full circle for the United States of America. And the United States to prove by their legislative actions and mechanisms that human rights, democracy and decolonization in pursuance. To the customary norms of international law shall prevail according to the primatishi principles of Moorish treaties and of peace. And the United Nations Charter, chapter eleven, which is imminent and paramount for the inhabitants known as indigenous Moors. To restore. to restore their trust territories in the empire of Morocco.
All right, thank you very much. So in section seven, circle seven, right? As we start to wrap up. In circle seven, the federal question about the future of the colonial fifty privileged chartered colonies, so-called states, in Morocco and the pending renewal of the paramount emanating document known as the Bilateral Treaty of Peace and Friendship eighteen thirty-six, Article twenty-five. Effect: A critical moment in history regarding the House of Representatives and the Senate of the United States, August third, nineteen oh six, referencing the letter from the Secretary of State submitting a report on the subject of citizenship, expatriation, and protections abroad, December twentieth, nineteen oh six, page four fifty-nine to four sixty, of Morocco. What happened? Why did I highlight this? I highlighted this regarding the Treaty of Peace and Friendship eighteen thirty-six, Article twenty-five talks about what? Either one of the parties can petition to abandon the treaty. So in nineteen oh six, the United States of America and the United States International Organization and its three branches of government, cause the United States of America don't have three branches of government. It exists in name only, right? So Theodore Roosevelt's now taking a look at this treaty. The Senate is taking a look at this treaty of nineteen oh six. And at that critical moment, at that critical moment in history, at that critical moment in history, they could have chosen to petition to abandon the bilateral Treaty of Peace and Friendship. And they could, could have petitioned to abandon the Treaty of Madrid of eighteen eighty. And said, nah, we're not interested in signing the Act of Algiers of nineteen oh six. That was a critical moment in history in nineteen oh six. They could have chosen not to sign the contract that gave the Moors back their political power under the triple principle. The Act of Algiers was a resurrect, resurrection of Moors. It gave us back our political power over what? All military, all police, all banking, all treaties, all conventions, and all arrangements in Morocco. And the United States of America knew that in nineteen oh six. So they're talking about it. And it became a very critical moment in history for them because they did what? They acquiesced and consented with a pen. Not only did they agree with the abstract, cause they had discussions, then they turn around through an act of Congress. And they agreed through consent, through their legislative branch, and they ratified, deposited, and promulgated the Act of Algiers of nineteen oh six that resurrected the Moors and gave them back their power. If in fact, the Moors knew how to make a proper claim through state. You have to understand, Moors. When we start talking about what? Let's go back to the charter. As we start to close out. When you're talking about the Pacific settlement disputes, well, let's talk about settlement of disputes. What was the first settlement of dispute we had? It was with self. We didn't understand who we were, and that's why people perish by the day for a lack of knowledge of self. So now that we understand that we're Moroccans and we know how to enforce our own Moroccan law, cause we were in the absence of our own treaty provisions, we didn't understand the contract. Once we understand contract law, then we can enforce our law, our state, cause it's validated by the counsel court. Now the counsel court comes in and issues an order to the United States of America, right? Such as this example I'm showing you. I'm just giving y'all a sneak preview of an order that already went out, March fifteenth, regarding the first stages of enforcing our treaty rights, cause the treaty's supreme law of the land. Not your Moorish constitution, your treaty's supreme law of the land. But you can't enforce the treaty until you become a party to the treaty, and the only way to become a party to the treaty is through a state. So which came first? The chicken or the egg? Well, they're both female, so it don't matter. Cause at the end of the day, once you ratify it, deposit and promulgate it, you just get to work. But the people must enact the constitution first. It's paramount. It is Moroccan law. Moroccan law says you have to have a constitution. It's not a belief. It's substantive law. So as, as I'm starting to close out. The Charter of the United Nations, Chapter six, about the Pacific settlement disputes, i.e. simply just how do you settle disputes? More specifically about Moors. How can Moroccans settle disputes? Answer: Enforce a strict sense of substantive contract law. It's just contract law. However, the Moors have to be in conformity to our own Moroccan law before we can petition a dispute. I am with that. It's law.